Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alaria. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Okay, good morning, everybody. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Abe Lincoln once said, "The philosophy of the classroom of one generation will be the philosophy of the government the next generation." So, that's today's word of wisdom. Madam Clerk?
Okay, under resolutions, I need a motion to approve the Job and Family Services bills for payment.
So moved, second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved, second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
There are no advances today. Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Approving bills for payment?
So moved, second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorized various personal actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of the Lorraine County Commissioners.
I believe we're going to have an executive session, is that not correct?
I've already initialed it, and I saw there was another initial on it, so I didn't know if we needed one.
I understood that the prosecutor was going to ask for an executive session, so maybe we can do, if there is any questions, we can go in for his issues and personnel if needed.
Okay.
Guess so.
I guess we have to say why we're going into personnel?
Well, certainly, we can request it now, I was going to wait until Jerry and I had spoke, so why don't we request an executive session at the conclusion of the agenda items for the express purposes of new hires and is it pending litigation, Jerry? Impending litigation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Number 10, need to approve and enter into a purchase of service contract between the Department of Job and Family Services and the Community Health Partners of Lorraine, Ohio, for physical and mental capacity testing for Ohio Works First participants effective July 1, 2002 through June 30, 2003, in the amount of $14,500. Need authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved, second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to advertise for bids to contract for hot applied crack ceiling of approximately 30.3 miles of county roads, and estimated cost of $188,981. Bid is to be received until 2:00 p.m. on Friday, June 21, 2002, and they'll be here in the hearing room. Need to publish the notice on the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on June 7, 14, 2002.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to approve the fiscal year 2003 addendum for the community-based correctional facility program, 501 subsidy grant agreement between Lorraine County and the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction for the extension of the grant until June 30, 2003. Grant awards in the amount of $1,635,661 for the period July 1, 2002 to June 30, 2003.
So moved, second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to retire the Lorraine County Sheriff's K-9 Unit, Mo, due to his age and no longer physically able to perform the daily activities of a K-9 unit. Deputy Perkins will pay the county $1 in order to keep Mo in his household, and will execute a release of claims and agreement to indemnify.
Also moved, I noticed that Mo's picture was in the paper with this last week, so apparently he's still around. Second.
Discussion.
Can we get a certificate to give Mo for retirement and service? Think we could do something like that?
Yeah, attach a doggy bone, too.
My neighbor bought a retired K-9 and had to put him down recently, so they are, they do a lot of work, so I wouldn't mind if we could put something from the Commissioners, a letter of retirement for service. I think that'd be appropriate.
Only if it's got a dog bone attached to it.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to approve and enter into various contract amendments between the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners on behalf of the Children and Families Council for the Help Me Grow Initiative, effective retroactive July 1, 2001 through June 30, 2002, for TANF, GFR, and October 1, 2001 through September 30, 2002, for Part C. Need authorize payment, and for the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board, the amendments are as follows. Number 1, Catholic Charities Services Corporation, Catholic Charities Family Center of Alaria. Amended contract shall not exceed $115,723.76. TANF dollars are $52,147.76. GRF, $6,000. Part C, $57,576. Number 2, Lorraine County General Health District, the amended contract shall not exceed $143,200. TANF dollars are $83,317. GRF funding, $28,983. Part C, $30,900. Number 3, Lorraine City Health Department, amended contract shall not exceed $295,703.17. TANF funding, $151,987. GRF funding, $99,545.17. Part C, $44,171. Number 4, Neighborhood House Association of Lorraine County, the amended contract shall not exceed $205,962.76. TANF dollars are $196,352.10. GRF funding, $11,610.66. Part C, there's no funding there. Number 5, Rehab Services Incorporated, the amended contract shall not exceed $39,004.33. TANF dollars, $15,337. GRF funding, $10,482.33. And Part C, $13,185.
So moved. I'll second. I thought we might like to have a little bit on this.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
And one, can you explain what the Part C is?
Good morning, Commissioners. The Part C funding is the federal dollars, they're federal dollars that are specifically earmarked to serve the 0 to 3 population that have been diagnosed as having developmental delays, for example Downs Syndrome, or some severe symptom like that. So that's specifically to serve that particular population. Those dollars go to the Ohio Department of Health, and then they're passed on to the Commissioners for implementation in Lorraine County. The, they're on a federal year, that's why the timeframe is different, ma'am. It's 10/1/02 to 9/30/03, so that's why there's a distinction between the federal calendar year and the state fiscal year. What I could do, I know that this is the third time that I've been before the Commissioners requesting amendments for these contracts, and it may help to just give you a summary of each vendor here, and what this particular amendment will be doing. For example, Catholic charities, that will be an increase of $30,000 in the TANF award. The Lorraine County General Health District, it is a decrease in, of $30,000 in the TANF award. The Lorraine City Health Department is a decrease of $10,000 in the TANF award. The Neighborhood House Association of Lorraine County is a decrease in the TANF dollars, but an increase in the GRF dollars. The TANF decrease is 20,000, the GRF increase is 2,000. And finally, for Rehab Services Incorporated, it is an increase in the TANF award of $10,000. And once again, we arrive at these figures by doing variance reports. These are projections based on the amount of money that they have spent to date, as well as the number of children that they're expected to serve through the end of their contracts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One last question. Commissioners, we're still on track, I believe, to hopefully expend up to almost 90% of our allocation this year.
We're still on track to expend approximately 90%, which would be an incredible increase over the previous years in terms of this, the TANF, the TANF allocation.
This is all part of that aggressive management of those contracts and those funds. 90% doesn't sound that close to 100%, but normally you don't even have the ability to spend this amount of money, so they're doing a great job out there. I appreciate the work.
Thank you, and I appreciate the support over the past year. I know it's been difficult for all of us. Thank you.
Yeah, nothing worse than sending money back to the state when we can't spend it here, so I appreciate the good work.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to adopt new class titles and class number changes for certain classifications, and revise the same or similar lists under the Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services in accordance with Administrative Rule 123, 1-7-27.
I move, but I would also include that the resolution, that this resolution does not change the pay rates of these employees. I'll second. I believe that was noted in the letter of explanation.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to support and approve a grant application to be filed with the Bureau of Justice Administration through the Internet, no later than July 17, 2002, Lorraine County Sheriff's Department, Local Law Enforcement Block Grant, fiscal year 2002, LEBG program. The grant is in the amount of $18,611, which does require the county managing 10%, which is $2,068. This grant will reduce crime and improve public safety.
Do we know how this will be used, how this money will be used?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just as a review, we've been supplying this grant since 1996, and what we do, we use it for equipment to help in the crime prevention throughout the county. This grant will provide, we were looking at getting one of those trailer, monitor trailers for the speed, which they put outside the school districts and various streets throughout the community. We're looking at purchasing a laser radar gun, which also we use for traffic blitzes, which we've been putting on through the year. And also, that could be used in the Detective Bureau for measuring distances for various crime scenes also. Also on that, we're looking at picking up approximately 15 portables for the correction officers, and also, as you noticed throughout the county, several police departments, they've been involved in a lease program with the Harley-Davidson Corporation for traffic control and stuff like that, and we were looking at picking up leasing for one year, a couple Harley-Davidsons for neighborhood watches and parades and funerals and events like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
So moved, second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need a resolution providing for the guarantee of the payment of principal and interest by Lorraine County on the issuance and sale of bonds by Lorraine County Port Authority for the benefit of Lorraine County Visitors Bureau Incorporated.
So moved.
Discussion?
Yes. You know, from a creditor's standpoint, I can understand that the Port Authority has no assets or collateral, but the Visitors Bureau will have the building and has a source of revenue, so I don't understand why we would have to guarantee this funding. We don't with 501Cs.
That's correct, Commissioner, and the reason that we were requested to guarantee this funding, and the reason that it's a secure guarantee, is because we collect the revenue for the Visitors Bureau. They have some small amount of outside additional revenue, but the bulk of their revenue is collected through the transient guest tax, that's a levy throughout the county, and we collect those revenues. They do not get that money direct, and that was one of the reasons why they, we were looking for a county guarantee on the debt service. And the other issue was if the, if in fact, the Visitors Bureau does not maintain debt service, we can just withhold the debt service from the transient guest tax and make the payments directly, so the county would not be at any disadvantage. There's approximately $400,000 to $500,000 worth of transient guest tax coming into the county. That's slated to increase. As you know, there's two or three motels going up now in the county, and I anticipate that bed tax increasing quite a bit, so there'll be more than adequate resources so that the general fund does not have to take any liability in this issue.
Will the county hold title to the property until this is paid? Or how's that going to work?
I hadn't looked at that issue, but I believe that that's an asset, and if they do not pay the debt service on their debts, and if in fact, the transient guest tax is not enough to pay the debt service, which I can't envision it not being, the debt service is going to be around $80,000 or $90,000 a year.
That's what I was going to ask, so yeah, $80,000 to $90,000 a year in debt service, we're secured by $500,000 a year in revenue. And how much is the total bond amount?
It'd be close to $1 million.
$1 million, so if they ever did, we could take two years and pay it back, right? So we're secured 100% by revenue from the hotel tax, right?
If I had the money, I'd loan it to them.
It would probably be a little more.
At that rate, you wouldn't. I'll just hypothetically.
But I think it was an issue that we need to explore. As far as the ownership of the property, if we were making debt service from the general fund, obviously, we could go after their assets if we had to go deeper in the revenue collected from the transient guest tax.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Oh, do you? I'm sorry.
Any more discussion? That's okay. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
We discuss and establish a fee schedule for the filing of annexation petitions.
Okay, I was thinking, we already have one, a bond for ditches established.
Was this open?
I'm wondering if we can use something like that, Jerry, and maybe increase it. The only thing that worries me is with these new annexations, we may have a lot of court reporter expenses, and I just want to make sure that the county's going to be covered. I don't want to put a cap on it in case we run over.
Are we going to have court, are we going to have court reporters, please?
Some of them.
I mean, usually, they bring their own in, don't they?
Yeah, but sometimes we may want one.
Well, it's possible.
The County Commissioners Association has put together a model resolution, and one of the things they suggest is establishing a fee deposit schedule for these, which would include the possibility of setting up subpoenas, and it's trying to set up a system, and what they recommend is that if somebody wants a court reporter, they make a request seven days before, and then we can say, if you're doing that, you have to put a certain deposit in. And that gives us kind of a heads up whether, you know, what kind of a contested hearing we're going to have.
If they're going to want a court reporter, what I've seen is they usually bring their own. They don't ask us, they just bring them in.
Yeah, but there's five different annexations now, and it may be possible somewhere down the road that the Board of Commissioners may want a court reporter or feel it's necessary to have one here. And I just want to cover all bases in case that happens.
That's fine, but do we have a model resolution?
It covers the subpoenas, I believe, Jerry, but I don't think it covers the fee schedules.
Let me ask you this, have you reviewed it, Jerry, or is this something we have to do today, or would you rather make a recommendation so we can review the resolution so we can vote on it?
We have two different issues here. The subpoenas, we may be able to do today, but I don't think the fee schedule, we can, but we can discuss it.
Okay, well, I mean, I have looked at the model resolution. Certainly something that's workable. We probably have to take a look at what we've charged in the past. Basically, for subpoenas, it just recommends that we charge whatever the courts charge for issuing subpoenas, so that's pretty.
So number 20's covered, so that's basic.
Right.
18, you think you need to review the boilerplate they gave you? Want to review and see if we can tweak it?
Well, we can meet with Roxanne and see if we can come up with an idea as to what we would recommend. You know, I don't think the court reporter thing needs to be really complicated, because they don't charge that much for just actually appearing.
But it's when you want a transcript, yeah.
The expense really gets large. So, they do make a recommendation that we establish, put these into a special revenue fund, so that's something I mentioned to Mr. Roca C. a little bit, and that's something we should probably consider, too.
So we would have to establish another fund to, a line item for this.
Okay, so 18, we're going to have to hold, then? Does that sound right, Jerry?
Okay.
You would rather, I mean, Commissioners, does that sound okay?
Yes.
So 18, we're going to hold. How about 19? Do we need to discuss that today, or is that something?
Well, under the new law, what happens now is the minute one of these is filed, you have to set a date for a hearing within five days, so there may be circumstances where we aren't even having a meeting, so I would certainly recommend that you authorize the clerk to have the authority to go ahead and.
Even though we don't have an established fee?
Yeah, that's, in other words, what happens now is when somebody files a petition, it's put on our agenda to accept it, or however, whatever language we ended up with there, I don't remember, but we found the agenda to set a hearing date, and the Commissioners pass a formal resolution. What the statute did is because it now requires that that date be scheduled within five days, and as I said, that may occur when we don't even have time to have a meeting. So you may be either in a position where you have to call special meetings just to set this hearing. What's recommended on the state level is that you authorize the clerk to go ahead and just.
But we don't need a fee schedule? Approved before we approve that?
No.
Okay, that's all I was asking.
Commissioners, I'm sorry, Commissioner, please. I would recommend that you use the clerk or the assistant clerk here. Normally, both of them are not gone at the same time, so that'll just make sure that at least somebody's here that can conduct this business.
Amended to add the assistant clerk, that's a good idea, Jim.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 19, authorizing the clerk or assistant clerk of the Board to schedule public hearings for proposed annexation and provide associated notices. Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Are we holding number 20, or is it not that big of a deal?
We don't have to.
Pass a resolution mirroring the fee schedule for subpoenas.
It's in the ORC 311.17, the fee schedule's set.
And that's the one that the court, Jerry, is that the one you're referring to, court suits?
So I'll move on that.
That's fine, I can, I mean, I'll incorporate that into the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'll incorporate that into the larger resolution, but if you want to go ahead and do that today, or you can wait a week on that.
Well, we can do it, at least it's done.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, was 18 tabled?
18 was hold until next week. Number 21, to exempt all purchases under $750 for calendar year 2002, this is established at Resolution Number 99352, it was adopted May 13, 1999, and streamline the payment procedures outlined in the Audit Review Committee Letter of April 30, 1999.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, okay, you're talking about streamlining the payment procedure. I have a problem with the word "all," exempt all purchases. I think we should exclude furniture and office equipment, and I don't know if you can think of anything else, but it's my opinion that I could purchase a $750 chair today, and then go back out tomorrow and get another chair, and that never has to come through the Board, and that messes up our budget, because I think it's items like that that should come through the Board. And I don't know, Yvonne may have some other suggestions, but I believe there should be some exclusions. You shouldn't just leave an open, you can buy anything for $750 and not have to come through the Board.
My understanding is that we missed this, this is a house cleaning measure, we should have passed this in January, since this was already done the year before, and that we haven't been operating properly since January. That's my understanding why this is on here.
Shame on us.
But I'm glad it's on here, because this has been bothering me for some time now, this, just a per, open wallet of $750.
This issue was on the agenda sometime earlier in the year, and I have to go back and review. It was either tabled or put on hold, or should have been covered under all business. When we were looking at another issue with the prosecutor, I believe you went looking for the resolution, Jerry, and we discovered that the resolution wasn't completed earlier in the year as necessary. However, the county's continued to conduct business in the fashion that we were previous to not passing that resolution, and we need this resolution, at least to date, to give validity to everything that's been done up to this date. So if a modification's going to be sought or approved, I think that we need to bifurcate that process into one that is retro to the beginning of the year from this week back, and then if you want a different policy from this week forward. That would ensure that there's no difficulty with audits in the future.
Okay, I don't have a problem with doing this. This goes back to when, May 13, 99, or January?
No, it's probably for the year 2002.
Well, that's the original resolution, goes back to 99, but we're asking for 2002.
Okay, so we don't, it'd be an auditing nightmare if we were to change it now, because then you'd have people in violation if we exempted furniture and office equipment, correct?
Well, at least from this date back to the beginning of the year.
Oh, just one comment, they, even if they're exempted, they have to have appropriate funding in their account to pay for these items, do they not?
That's correct.
But they've already bought them after the fact, right?
Well, the.
No, that was not my point. My point was that even though Commissioner Vassie is very correct, and she said that they don't have to come before us for approval under $750, they have to have an appropriation in order to purchase those items.
Yes, that money has to be appropriated to them or available to them in the beginning of the year after the budgetary process.
So in effect, we've appropriated monies for these general items, and. Yeah, but they can always come back, and a lot of departments do, they come back in October and November and say, oh, well, you know, we don't have enough funding in our budget for this, we need additional funding, and normally, the Board approves their additional funding, and we don't know the reasons, and one of the reasons for them, the need, could be overspending in this area. And I'm just saying, let's plug all holes if we can. Has this been a problem since this policy was instituted? I guess I would direct the question to the Budget Director through you, Mr. Cardet.
I'm not aware of any problems. I have spoken to Commissioner Vassie on this issue, and some concerns that she has. Mr. Roca C. may be better able to speak to whether there's been some difficulty with the budget, more so than I. John?
Good morning, John Roca C., County Budget Director. Today, we have not had a problem budgetarily because, for the simple reason that anybody that would come back and had spent money for several chairs, for example, would still have to come back to the Board of Commissioners to secure additional appropriation. So, the safety net is the Board's approval, or not, or disapproval of additional appropriation.
Thank you, John.
You are.
I just talked with other Commissioners from other counties, and they do have limits on what the, the money can be spent for. They do put exemptions, and they outline their exemptions. Yvonne, do you want to speak to this issue?
Good morning, Commissioners. Yvonne Newton, Purchasing Director for the County Commissioners. Commissioner Vacy is absolutely right, there is a clause there that spells out what departments can buy underneath that $750. Some counties even have exempt for $500. It depends on what the Board pleasure is on that. But it is, it's like some of them are exempt from different things like furniture, equipment, and so forth, just to get good pricing and so forth, to basically use their purchasing department. So, there are things that are exempt underneath that $750.
That, that's a good point, too, to get your, your buying in volume through the purchasing department, where if you're buying one item at a time, you're, you're spending more.
I agree, I think when we get ready to buy furniture for the Justice Center...
Well, it's not gonna be under $750. Sorry.
David has his way, will be.
Oh, don't go there, you don't want to go there.
Oh, my goodness.
Want to have that discussion right now?
No, please, please. Well, it's a pleasure, the Board, whatever.
I have a motion on the floor.
I like, I tell you what, I, I think we should, I would prefer to, to add additional furniture and itemize it, right, but do that for next year's budget, and put it, and then maybe, I mean, it's a pleasure to the Board, but I think it's one of those things where we should have done this in January, we didn't do it, we missed it. Let's just finish out the year, one's already been, we can control the spending through appropriations, and then next year, or between now, let's start working on the, if you would like to help, or if the two of you can put together a resolution, then maybe can itemize anything like furniture, desk, I mean, really, it's chairs and desks that people seem to buy, and then we can start using our, the power of, of the whole county to purchase these things cheaper. If you guys could design a resolution, and maybe it can include anything else you can think of that might help the county. I think it'd be appropriate, then we can implement it in November when we're doing our budget talks. Okay? Is that, is that okay with the Board?
It's fine.
Sounds reasonable.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor?
Yes. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Need to publish a construction services public announcement to contract for services in connection with the roadway widening for Colorado Avenue in the City of Lorain. Engineering firms interested in being considered for a contract should reply with a statement of qualifications no later than 2:00 p.m. on Friday, July twelfth, two thousand and two. Estimated construction costs are in the sum of $3,885,424. Source of funding will be the Federal and Ohio Public Works Commission. Anticipated start date will be July two thousand and two, completed in October two thousand and three, and I'd post a notice in the Chronicle Telegram on June tenth, two thousand and two.
So, moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
I'd like to grant the request of the Wellington Township Trustees, that was dated in a letter of May ninth, two thousand and two, and authorize the allocation of $90,000 to the township from the CSX negotiated agreement to help finance their building fund for a township office and meeting complex for the safety and benefit of the residents of Wellington Township. The County Prosecutor's Office has reviewed, and by letter dated May thirty-first, two thousand and two, indicated that as long as the proposal of the trustees on its face addresses environmental issues, their discretion in the matter should be honored.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Uh, yeah, I believe that this ends the CSX money, this is the end of it. We did four projects throughout the county.
True.
And this is the last of them. That's the only comment I had, thank you.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
With the request of the Township of Pittsfield, the City of Oberlin, to work cooperatively toward gaining an agreement to provide sanitary sewers to commercially zone land in the township that is adjacent to city lands. Said land is within Oberlin two oh eight planning area. Further, if the parties do not achieve an agreement that sufficiently addresses the needs of the property, the Board does herein deem the city to be unwilling or incapable of providing sanitary sewers to the property, and the city has thus compelled the Board to support the township's request to NOACCA to redesignate the property to Lorco's planning area, which contains approximately 125 acres located in Pittsfield Township on State Route 58, currently owned by the Gott family.
Okay, thank you. I believe there's might be one or two people here today regarding this issue. This is a County Commissioners' meeting, so what I'll, what I want to do is, I believe, is there a resolution prepared yet, Mr. Cortez?
The resolution will contain pretty much what's written here. Madam Cork, you, have you put what I gave you in resolution form?
Just a draft, that's why I picked up the language here.
Commissioners, to make sure that this meeting goes smoothly, what about recommending those that are in favor and those that are against, and have them speak? Because it looks like there's people lining up that want to speak. Would you prefer just to vote on it and then have them talk a public discussion?
No, I prefer to hear the public first, pros and cons.
So, why don't we do this, to make it almost like a public hearing? We're not gonna have Jerry stand up and swear to make sure that everyone raises their hand, but what we'll do is, why don't we treat it, if that's okay with the Commissioners, treat it like a regular public hearing, with those that are for and those that are against, and then we'll go from there, is that okay?
Yep, it's good.
So, since, obviously, I think someone's here for, against, why don't we have those that are in opposition of this discussion speak first, and please, if you want to come up and talk in opposition of this motion, then please speak first. I think a resident... Okay, wait, Shirley, and, and before you do, we're going to make sure that you only speak three minutes, okay?
I'm not speaking either in opposition or, or otherwise. I'm just wanting to raise a question about this item procedurally. I was waiting to see what this was all about, and how it got on the agenda, and why this item is on the agenda in this way. It sounds as if the Board, in the fourth sentence, which I assume means the Commissioners, has already made a decision in sending a directive. It would seem more appropriate for the Commissioners to hold a public hearing, gather information, pros and cons, and obviously, you are attempting, you are deciding that the questions should come first and, and some, and some statements be made, but I still think procedurally, there's a question of how this got here, and why, and whether, and why this statement indicates that the Commissioners have already made up their mind in sending a directive. I have never seen such a directive made in, to another city and township without more information and public participation in this, and so on. I don't, I asked Mr. Ennis ahead of time if this was a legal requirement, and I gather he will explain to what extent it is or is not a legal requirement if it's asked further by other people.
Okay.
But you can understand our puzzlement of how this suddenly appears, and...
Well, it didn't suddenly appear, we do have agendas that are typed up and put on our agenda, so...
But it's the kind of item that normally gets a hearing or some public discussion...
Well, not necessarily, well, okay, thanks, Shirley.
And people are normally informed that it's gonna be here, I'm not even sure that people knew it.
Okay, thank you, Shirley. Mr. Cortez, did you want to answer that?
I'm glad you're not for or against it, Shirley.
She knew your comment.
As far as...
I'll miss you later.
As, as far as certain requirements go, we, we have been in dialogue with Lorco and Pittsfield Township for some time. Members of this Board...
And NOACCA.
And NOACCA, and members of this Board did attend, within the past few weeks, a meeting where the city was present, city representatives, township representatives, and county representatives to talk about the issue. Pittsfield Township and the city have had a, a long history with this issue. As far as sending a directive, we're not sending a directive. NOAC, excuse me, Pittsfield Township and Lorco have asked whether the county would be in support of a petition to redesignate that area, and there is no requirement for a public hearing to do that, but there has been some work, and it, simply because it hasn't been on our agenda doesn't mean that there hasn't been a lot of, of thought and discussion and work put into this process. So, we're at the juncture now where the Water Quality Control Subcommittee is meeting with NOACCA very soon, and some of these issues are going to start being moved at, at the level with NOACCA, of which this county has several seats. So, we need to, we need to get busy on this issue one way or another, it's not an issue that's going to wait another two or three or four months. NOACCA wants to move on this issue, and in fact, I believe they're going to have a special meeting to deal with this issue. That's why it's on our agenda, so I did...
Well, they, they have a meeting June the nineteenth, it's my understanding, and that the township is going to attend their committee meeting on June the nineteenth, and, and that's the control, to control the wastewater areas, that committee controls that.
Right, they'll be, they'll be addressing the redesignation also.
Quality Committee?
Right.
Okay, thank you, I tell you what, let's get started, and please state your name and your position.
Good morning, my name is Rob Dispirito.
Morning, Rob.
City Manager, City of Oberlin, and I very much appreciate the opportunity to have, just within three minutes, to speak to you this morning. Oberlin respectfully requests that this resolution not be acted upon for the following reasons. Number one, the resolution draws a conclusion very clearly in favor of Lorco and the township, even though the developer has not yet created so much as a preliminary engineering plan for either the multi-big-box strip commercial center he is proposing, nor the unmanned onsite spray-type sanitary sewage treatment system that he is also proposing in concept. How can such a one-sided position, as this resolution calls for, be taken without the Commissioners and the public having the opportunity to first hear both sides? Number two, we see several references to satisfying the needs and wants of the property owner of this farm field, but we note the complete absence of any mention of consideration to protect the thirty-six families who reside next door, as well as the sixty new single-family homes that will soon be built there. Three, the City of Oberlin is both willing and able to provide sanitary sewers to that site. A twelve-inch sewer line runs across the frontage of this farm, so we are literally able to serve, and through the process of annexation, the city is willing to serve this site. The property owner has never approached the City of Oberlin for an annexation request, and rezoning, once annexed, is a, is a lawful right of that property owner. They can, a lawful right to petition the Council for a rezoning. In no way is the City of Oberlin compelling the County Commissioners to support the township's request to NOACCA to alter Oberlin's facility planning area. And I would respectfully request once more that this action, not this resolution not be acted upon this morning in the interest, as was stated just a moment ago, of having a more fuller hearing on the subject, because it is quite clear to everybody that this resolution does draw a specific recommendation should the two sides not be able to work out a compromise.
You mentioned Oberlin was willing and able to sewer, but only through annexation only. We've been very successful as a Board here to get communities to come together and work out their differences, and work together without annexation.
It's the city law.
And it sounds like to me, you've made a statement that, the only way.
The citizens have made a statement through their elected representatives, the City Council, when they approved a longstanding city law, which is typical with many cities, that sewer or other utility extension only occur through the annexation process.
Was that a voted issue?
Excuse me?
Was that a voted issue?
It was an ordinance approved by the elected representatives of the citizens of Oberlin.
So, the citizens didn't actually participate in that, in that decision?
They did through their elected representatives, yes.
Through their elected representatives.
Which means we're acting through our elected representatives, too, so, okay, thank you, same thing, I guess.
Yes, but still, you want to hear from the citizens.
You'd like to. I think we're about to, too.
Good, good.
Elizabeth Rumics Oberlin, R-U-M-I-C-S Oberlin, I would like to pick up a couple of the points that Mrs. Johnson made, and one that Mr. Dispirito alluded to. The first sentence and the second one of this agenda item, I don't think anyone would have any problem with. What is troubling is the statement, "The Board does herein deem the city to be unwilling or incapable of providing sanitary sewers, and the city has thus compelled the Board to support the township's request." That is, to me, extremely peculiar language, not least in the fact that in the immediately preceding agenda item, there was a reference made, analogously, not similarly, that as long as the proposal of is on its face addressing environmental issues, and this is the part I'm thinking of, their discretion in the matter should be honored. It would seem to me that if it's applicable to one entity on one topic, it's certainly not to be ignored on this one. One other thing, as my understanding is, EPA has not yet reported on this, and if it's a matter of water quality before any action should be taken, surely, there should be a complete and thorough review of potential pluses and minuses and so forth.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else?
Good morning, Commissioners, my name's Bill Gendra, I'm Chairman of Oberlin City Council, and I'd like to point out that at Mr. Jim McConnell's request, the Pittsfield Township clerk, I did meet with them, with him individually on May ninth, in an attempt to work out some sort of compromise. His brother, Mark McConnell, the trustee, joined us, and unfortunately, after listening to quite a bit of why he didn't trust anyone from Oberlin, I excused myself from the meeting without being able to come to any sort of agreement or some sort of compromise. The reason I'm here today is simple, I'm here because of the residents that abut this property, and my concern for the impact that this will have on them. Is, is Oberlin willing to compromise and provide sewer to this area? Absolutely. Is the developer willing to look at a less dense use and something that has less impact on our residents? Not at this point. That's all we, all we ask for, is that he look at something that has less impact. I also would hold up your two thousand comprehensive land use plan and point out that a major portion of this property in that plan is listed as hydric soil or possible wetland. A spa, spray distribution system in that area would have a terrible impact on that, and I think that, you know, the city's willing to work towards some sort of agreement, we just want some assurance that it's not gonna have the kind of impact on our residents that this proposed big box would.
Okay, thank you, Mel.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Darryl Norris, represent Norris Builders Incorporated. I reside at 170 Mallard Creek Drive in La Grange, Ohio. Some time ago, we entered into a thought pattern with Oberlin to do a development of single-family homes in a planned community, and we picked the Route 2058 corridor as a very important part of our growth pattern, not just for a hundred homes, but for long-term growth for that area. And at that point, we petitioned the city to annex, which was Pittsfield Township at that point, into the City of Oberlin to get the utilities that we needed to perform our development. It was a process that we came before the Board at that point, and was actually given that appointment to be annexed. And the point, I guess I'm bringing up, is the utilities were given to us because of the procedure that we went through, that the city had asked us to do, based on the Commissioners' gracefulness, to perform annexation, to create a community that we've started. And it's only a beginning, it's not something that we're just gonna build a hundred homes there and, and just walk away from it, it's, we've got sub streets that we have planned, and we've paid for, to go to the north and to the south, and as we go farther west, there is more side streets that we have in our plans to do, which is a long-term thinking here, it's not just what we thought five years ago, but for ten years down the road. So, I guess what we're looking at is long-term growth in an area that we had planned on doing, not just for our forty-seven acres, but for, in that whole area. And as we addressed this issue five years ago, and we addressed this with the Director of Oberlin and the county itself, the initial thoughts was that all the commercial development that we would foresee in the near future would be on that Route 2058 corridor at that intersection, where there's plenty of land to do whatever we need to do for future commercial development, which at this point, has a large amount of acreage available at this point right now to develop. And we request that, our feelings at this point is to carry on with our initial investments that we saw in Oberlin and with the county, to keep this residential area that we originally had, and plan our future as we had thought we would do. Thank you.
What would stop that from happening?
If this acreage, which is what we're talking about right now, directly south of us, is developed into a commercial area that I think they're proposing, it's gonna choke off the residential growth to the south, which is where all the acreage is for future growth for Oberlin in that area, and really limit the growth in that area. By putting a commercial sliver between us and Route 20, it's just gonna, it's not gonna happen. What we had planned five years ago is not going to happen.
You planned, five years ago, you were saying that you had your side streets put in, and you're going west?
Yes, we were, and north and south.
Okay, how can you go, do you own the land or ready to go south?
No, but that party had addressed it to us five years ago, that it was for sale for us to buy at a future point.
Yeah.
And that was thinking that with Oberlin at that point, we were planning on making that decision in the near future. We have every intent to be there, we have a large investment there already. We have a large investment there already. We have quite a few people that live there at this point and more to come.
So you didn't put an option to purchase on the property then, I take it?
No, we did not at that time. We had forty-seven acres and the size of our company that we're at, at this point, we had plenty on our plate to do at that time. But it didn't mean that we were not interested. We had many conversations with the Gott family farm people at that point. They addressed it to us, and we've always mentioned that we were interested at some point.
But you just never could come up with the financing then, at that time, because you started this project, correct?
Correct.
That's kind of how, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak that's against this resolution? Please state your name.
My name is Ken Sloan, Oberlin City Council. Just a very short comment here. You talked about addressing this issue before putting it on the agenda. You've had meetings with Noaka, the Pittsfield Township, I believe the developer. I, I think Oberlin was left out of those meetings and were a part of this, and I hope that you can include us in the future. Thank you.
My name is Dorina Gilchrist. I live at 176 Reserve. I'm a lifelong resident of Oberlin. I live there with my mother, who planned to retire there. She has emphysema. I'm really concerned about the spray irrigation type sewage system that they're proposing to put in there, and just the impact of the traffic and the noise and the other pollution that's going to come with building such a large commercial development. As you can understand, no one wants to look out and see that. When we moved there, it wasn't there. It's just a very nice place to live, and I'd like to keep it there. Not that I wouldn't like to, or wouldn't entertain seeing something go in there. I know that change is inevitable. Things happen. But I just, from, you know, what I've read and what I've seen, I'm not, I can't say that I'm in agreement with the resolution. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Gilchrist.
My name is Nathan Haverstock. I'm just a garden variety citizen of Oberlin. I live at 36 South Street, and, and I'm probably less polite than some other people. I kind of resent the way you, Mr. Chairman, trivialize or refer sarcastically to citizen participation in these things, as if it's something you just want to get rid of.
Have I trivialized it? I didn't do that.
Well, that's my, my hearing of what you said. And I wanted to state for the record that I am very proud of our city administration and the citizens who are here, who are coming forward, who are trying to get this thing thought through in an intelligent way, rather than hewed to a deadline you arbitrarily set at two to four months because of something you've been told by Mr. Big Box, and that's it. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is David Sauner. I'm a resident of Oberlin. Thirty-some years ago, the city built a sewer to down 58 in order to accommodate a county facility, the Joint Vocational School. Since then, there have been several legal challenges in an effort to achieve a tap-in without annexation. The city has prevailed in those legal issues. And over thirty years, the city and the citizenry have supported this policy. There have been, if the citizens were displeased, or they thought it was to their advantage, to the community's advantage, to offer tap-ins, offer sewer service outside the city, outside the boundaries of the city, they have had three decades of opportunity to express that, either through electing people who advocated tap-in without annexation, or by undertaking a petition to overturn the ordinance. The city of Oberlin and the citizens of Oberlin recognize how crucial it is for cities to maintain a policy of no city services without annexation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
My name is Robert Kish. I now reside in Alaria after having lost my dream in Pittsfield. I had fifty-two acres. A creek was filled, nine houses were built on the other side, and all nine houses thought they owned both sides of the road. Not in my backyard, not in their front yard. They did not want me to build or be able to sell any houses. So I understand the feeling, but welcome. Welcome to 2002. You only think you own your land. Thank you. Bye.
Thanks, Matt.
My name is Doug Johnson. I'm a citizen of Oberlin, and I'd like to ask the commissioners if the county engineer has or will be called upon to study the alternative to this, to the Oberlin sewers, and if, if he does that, if that is done, if there could be some public, some public information on the alternative and where there are installations that are put in, like the alternative, and when this information will be available to the public.
The, to respond to that question, the county engineer, if this area is re-designated to Loco, while in his role as the sanitary engineer reporting to this board, because the board's responsible for sanitary sewer issues within the county, not the county engineer, I'm sure that we'll get a look at what Loco's proposing. But it would be Loco's engineers that would be looking us over on the spray irrigation system, recognizing that the EPA has some very stringent standards for a spray irrigation system. They're a long way from design or from EPA approval on that. Before they, they can go forward and do any of that, the area needs to be within a planning area that they're permitted to operate. My, my, my limited understanding is that the developer would, would pay for the installation of the spray irrigation system, and Loco would operate and maintain that spray irrigation system. But I, I think that that's, that's a long, long way from, from being approved by the EPA, and I believe that they have to have hearings on it, and there's a lot to come on, on, on that. So it's not just going to be, somebody's going to go in, they're going to re-designate the area, and you're going to wake up one day and they're going to have a spray irrigation system. It's a very, very complicated process, and the EPA makes those things very, very difficult to install because of the regulations. So there's a lot to come on that.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Parsh. I'm a garden variety business owner and downtown Oberlin and garden variety, a member of the Chamber of Commerce and member of the Main Street Program in Oberlin. And it is our opinion that this development would have a negative impact on the community as well as the business community, and contribute to, continued alienation in the community. I think that it is, just sucks the life right out of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to talk against?
Good day. My name is John Pierre. I live at 205 Reserve Avenue in Oberlin. And my backyard is, is directly up against this property. I've got four small children, and we planned on living in Oberlin for a very long time. But this kind of development makes it very unattractive to be there. You know, I haven't seen any plans. I haven't seen any final plans, because I don't think there are any yet. I haven't seen traffic studies. I haven't seen crime rate studies. You know, you bring in any kind of retail, any kind of business, your, your crime is going to go up. I haven't seen any, any kind of information that would allow me to feel comfortable with this whole situation. What I do know is that we have a very nice development going here. We've got a developer who would like to have the opportunity to, to expand his development, make more homes. I understand that we have a, a city of Oberlin who is willing to help them do that. I understand that we also have a township, a Pittsfield Township, a developer who's, who's not been overly cooperative with the city of Oberlin to try to get these things Now let's also take a look at what's on Route 58 right now, just south of Oberlin. County spent a lot of money. They put in a, a nice recreational facility. It's called the Splash Zone. We've got the homes going in there. What kind of area is, is this? It's a recreational residential area. That's, you know, anybody, anybody who's, who has two eyes can see what, what it's been designated for. Now, immediately to the south, we want to put in commercial, all of a sudden. I mean, this doesn't make sense to me. Why do we want to mix commercial development with residential and recreational? It doesn't make sense. From what I do understand of the, the plans that I have heard about and that I have seen, the land usage study, and the developers all think that Southern Lorain County is going to be the main draw, so to speak, for these retail outlets and whatnot. Well, my question to Lorain County is, why would you want to make them come up through a major intersection of Route 58 and 20? Route 20 is the main throughway for east-west traffic through northeast Ohio and Lorain It doesn't make sense to bring them up. We can't even get a turning lane put in on Route 58 north-south to turn onto 20. And all of a sudden, we want to put in this new development that would supposedly bring more traffic to the area. So we, we've got a new light going up at Hamilton Street on 58, just south of Oberlin, which will help control traffic a little bit. We've just lowered the speed limit about five miles an hour from Route 20 north into the city of Oberlin. And now we're talking about, we've got, we've had traffic problems at Route 58 and 20 for a long time, but we can't seem to get anything done about the turning lane there. And now we want to put a big development right smack in the middle of that, and we want to make more traffic problems, and we want to make more noise pollution, we want to make more light. It doesn't make sense to me, and my request to you is, is, is please don't let that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierre. Anyone else?
Morgan Williams, resident of Oberlin and co-director of an organization called the Oberlin Design Initiative. The name is a bit of a misnomer, because we don't just represent the interests of the city of Oberlin, but also the townships surrounding the city of Oberlin and the county at large. We're promoting sustainability in terms of economic development and community development and environmental stewardship. Basically, our interest is looking at the long-term effects of some of these things on a regional scale. And I'd just like to voice, not a critique of the, the big box in and of itself, but the process by which we're going about dealing with the big box. I think our goal is, in fact, intergovernmental cooperation, but the process doesn't lend itself to kind of dialogue that would enable that kind of cooperation. I think that we seriously need to revisit the kind of information that we gather in assessing this and the process by which we've gone about assessing it, because unless we do that, we're not going to have the kind of intergovernmental cooperation that's really vital to the sustainability of our region.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Ron Ternick. I'm a resident of Oberlin and Oberlin Reserve. I was one of the very first families in there, as a matter of fact, the very first house. And when I moved out there, I never dreamed that I would have a commercial development right in my backyard. And like John said, you know, the Splash Zone and everything else has contributed to more residential use of that land, and also, I don't think anybody in this room right now, if they've had a big box there, right there, and then they have this property right next to it, you would want to buy them houses right there. And that's what's going to happen to the rest of them, development that goes beyond us right now. And the only reason I see that this has happened is because, and not anything against the Gott family or wanting to sell their property, you know, they're offered probably twice as much commercially that they would get residentially. And that's how this all developed. So as far as I'm concerned, in my opinion of it, you know, with all the families that are in there right now, it's going to make our property values go down. I mean, if that does happen, more than likely, I will probably try to sell out and try to move out somewhere where I wanted this kind of land usage, you know, with residential and not commercial behind me. If you look in Alaria, how they built up all around there, all them houses across the street of all that development there, they're all, all them families want out of there. Who wants to buy into commercial right next to a commercial development as far as stores? You have to have them, but I think it can be planned out better and farther away from residential, where it can be built up and where a resident, a resident doesn't have to worry about, you know, all that traffic and all the problems that, that come with it. I know it's needed, but I think it's a bad spot for it, and I don't think that they should be allowed to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ternick.
Good morning. Fran Baumann, Oberlin City Council. I just wanted to make you aware of an article that appeared in the Columbus Dispatch on, on Thursday, May 30th, and the head of the article, the title of the article is "Ohio EPA Sewer Plan Would Ban Spray Irrigation Systems." And apparently in Columbus, they are looking at this and, and trying to come up with some guidelines, and it would seem to me that it may be a little too early for us to make a decision until the EPA has made some sort of a decision on it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Good morning, everyone. Bert Latrin Jr., resident of Pittsfield Township, immediately upstream from this potential development. I would just like to ask the commissioners to just maybe take a little bit more time than what they've suggested, to review this proposal. The Gotts themselves indicated it took four years to finally find a buyer of this type of development that has been questioned right now. This particularly not, is not particularly hot, hot zone in that area. We have a lot of residents that would be impacted adversely to this, and we can't just sweep them under the rug and say, well, you can find a home somewhere else. These people's wishes, I think, need to be honored. The children involved as well need to be honored. I'm just asking for more time to, to look this over, think it over. Don't rush into something. Look before you leap. Perhaps it is the smart decision, but let's prove it. Let's prove it, if it takes a ballot even. Let's hear a lot of people's voices and go forward from that, based on what the majority of the people would like to see from that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak in opposition of this resolution?
My name is John Prieto. I live at 69 Reserve Avenue, and I am also against this building of this shopping center or whatever it is. I bought into Oberlin because it's such a beautiful community. Very nice people, historical, and to put a big box there and create traffic congestion with, with the splash being there, I don't think so. So I, I hope that the commissioners will at least examine it a little more and will come to the right decision somehow. Thank you.
Thank you for attending.
I'm Emmeline Ingles, a resident of Oberlin, and I'd just like to ask that the people who are going to be most affected by this resolution be the ones who are considered most in the decision. And that would be the, the homeowners in the area, as well as the business owners in Oberlin. And we all know the, the economic impact of having a large big-box store put in, and I think that most of the residents of Oberlin would be against this resolution, since what they want out of their small town is the small-town feel, which could definitely be destroyed by a large big-box store. So, and as well as also the environmental impacts of having such a large development put in. So please consider those things.
Thank you for coming.
My name's Ron Rembert, Oberlin City Council. I had the pleasure of going over to Avon this past week for a soccer tournament, so I took the opportunity to go over and look and see what they had done with their development. A lot of, a lot of different usage as far as land. And what I'd like to say to the commissioners, please think of the land usage, think of Lorain County, because I know that's your job, to look at the whole county, and you look at all residents, and don't forget these residents of Oberlin and that surrounding area, because this will make an impact for years and years to follow. We're not talking about two or three years. We're talking about ten, twenty years. My kids' kids and your kids' kids who may want to enjoy Lorain County, so think of them also, okay? I appreciate that very much.
I appreciate that you went to Avon, used as an example, Ron. City council there, what they did is they were going to put the big boxes in right up next to the residential homes, and what city council did there is they pushed it back as far away and then redesigned that whole front, because that's not how Avon started. Then they put in Bike Pass around there.
But if you look at Avon...
I'm just saying, that's how it originally started. It was going to be something that was not attractive, was not going to, I don't think was going to be very pleasing to the community. And by city council getting involved... community. And by City Council getting involved and stopping it and saying, look, it's time to revisit this. And they actually pushed it back as far as it could and also made it very appeasing versus, you know, you're driving around two, it doesn't look as good, but who cares? You're not going to be in Route 2.
And I agree. I had the opportunity to ride back in it and look at it, but I just think we're looking at so much more land in Avon. I mean, and just off the top of my head, I thought that was six or 700 acres compared to this 125 acres, which is just going, you know, that particular way. If you really look at it, well, how would that be developed? And from everything I've seen, you've got a 30-foot buffer between this reserve and that. You know, I just deploy to please look at it and look at it with a lot of, you know, compassion for the folks that are going to have their homes right there, and they plan on living there the rest of their lives.
You are on City Council, correct?
That's right.
I have a question. If this was to be annexed, it would still be built? It could still be built?
Commissioner, all property in Oberlin is very similar to most cities and incorporated areas in the county.
Would it be rezoned?
It would be brought in as residential property, and then the landowner would have to seek rezoning of the property, and there is no guarantees of zoning. So, I'm not sure that anybody would give you, you know, an answer of what would happen after the property was annexed.
Well, what is the zoning now? It's residential, correct?
The zoning right now is commercial. In the land use plan for the township, it's commercial?
No, I mean, in Oberlin, what, in that area, what is the zoning?
Residential.
If it was annexed, what would it be?
Residential.
Residential, correct? Okay. That's what I need to know. Thank you.
I'd like to commend the commissioners for bending their agenda and permitting this public hearing on this subject.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak against?
Good morning. My name is Lucian Eisenhower. I'm a newer resident to Oberlin. I think before the county commissioners today, there's a resolution that needs to be delayed and not put through. I think you're in a position to really consider the character of Lorain County as a whole. I think Oberlin is a very unique community, and then it has that small-town feel, that it's not one of our standard towns that has really been gutted by a surrounding ring of big-box stores and strip malls. And frankly, I grew up doing construction of things that really don't last that long. I think by allowing Oberlin to exercise its right to annex this property and to work with the developers, you're allowing Oberlin as a city to really make a strong investment in the character of that place. And I think that really holds for the overall quality of Lorain County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Casey Pickett. I'm also a resident of Oberlin and fellow co-director of the Oberlin Design Initiative. The city of Oberlin is about to engage in a comprehensive planning process that'll last about a year long. That process will enable the city to develop a set of guidelines and a system by which we could allow commercial development in a way that really worked for the entire community. But if this decision is taken out of the purview of the city of Oberlin, we would be incapable of doing that. And we wouldn't be able to end up with a system that seems to work in Avon, a system like that.
Right.
Another point is, and I apologize for not having the actual statistics in front of me. I just heard about this meeting last night. NOAAAC did a study a couple of years ago on the amount of commercial space in Lorain County. And they found that there's far more commercial space in Lorain County than the community actually needs. And a lot of, it's, the situation is such that the community can't support all the commercial space, the square footage that's already here. That's just a good thing to keep in mind as we're considering putting in more commercial space. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Just to dovetail off of that, I have the executive summary of that study if anyone's interested in looking at it.
Yes. Who would? Anybody else? Usually, when I do that, someone stands up.
You mentioned Avon. I'm not sure the names of all these developments. The one, Cobblestone, I believe, is the one that I've gone to recently, and it's a nightmare over there already. They're just getting started.
Sure. Well, I'm sorry, but it's number 23. What is your name again?
Dave Parsh.
Thank you, Dave. I'm sorry. I was keeping track here.
You know, these are supposed to be the planners and developers. They're supposed to be doing their job, but they haven't done their job over there. So, how can we expect that a good traffic flow will be created in the Oberlin area? I live on a pile south Amherst, and I can see that all becoming a big cut-through coming through Amherst, going down Hamilton with the new development. They try to lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour, but people are just going to go faster and faster through that area. There's no way you can keep that road, a two-lane road. You already have a big traffic jam coming out of JVS on a daily basis like you would at LCC, even more so out of JVS. They all come out at the same time. I just, just the traffic flow in there would just make that whole area a nightmare. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. I believe we got the turning lane coming in, don't we? Can we vote on the turning lane for JVS?
What we did out at JVS, we agreed to the dead-ending of the road coming around so that you didn't have the two-way traffic coming out of there.
Yeah, that was just up here recently.
Elizabeth Rummick. Since you all are being patient with others coming up a second time, I thought I'd take advantage of you. And simply reiterate that, to me, it seems pertinent today is the boards taking action of this sort with the language that is in here. And it's the process, the procedure involved here today, not only the impact of the thing that has me concerned. I am very concerned about the board deemed the city to be unwilling or incapable, especially if, as was said, Oberlin has not been in on any of these discussions, and the assertion that therefore, the city has compelled the board to support the township's request.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else?
My name is Tammy Schubert, and my fiance and I moved here two weeks ago. We live at 130 Reserve Avenue. We picked Oberlin because of its charm. The downtown area is gorgeous, the small businesses. I would just hate to see what would happen if we go ahead with this. It'll turn into a ghost town, maybe another Barea. I'd just hate to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Paul Swanson, and I'm a student and resident at Oberlin. My concern is much with the environmental impact and with the residents nearby, is with the economic impact of such a big-box store and the fact that it would be basically sucking money out of the town as a whole. The owners of a Walmart-style store, they're not going to be investing nearly as much money back into the community as most of the community stores that are there already, which are owned by residents of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if you don't mind, commissioners, I'd like to ask those that might be here in favor of this resolution. Does anybody here in favor of this resolution? Would like to speak on behalf of this resolution?
My name is Fred Osbaugh. I'm the executive director of the Rural Lorain County Wastewater District, also known as Lorco. And I just want to make a brief statement from the 208 Water Quality Management Plan update that was authored by NOAAAC, certified by the state of Ohio, and signed by the governor in November of last year. Within that authority, there is a policy by which, I would like to read just three sentences, that the existing, in relation to changing this area, that the existing DMA, that being Oberlin at this time, is unprepared or is unwilling to extend service to the challenged area, that being the 125 acres that we're speaking of, or that they have conditions that are unacceptable to the applicant community. Also, that an alternative sewer-ing plan exists that protects the environment, and we have a predetermination by the Ohio EPA that technically, the proposed spray irrigation is environmentally sound, and that the alternative plan is technically achievable, economically justifiable, and politically acceptable. That the proposed DMA, which in this case is Lorco, has the legal authority to act, which under this plan, Lorco did obtain that legal authority as a DMA. With that, we would request that the commissioners, as there have been meetings in the past with NOAAAC, and then NOAAAC has scheduled a meeting for June the 19th, that we would ask the commissioners to act on a timely basis on a request for support of redrawing of the 201 facility planning area for that 125 acres. Everything else that is technical and achievable will follow before the water quality management plan, or the water quality subcommittee of NOAAAC as required to be presented at that time. Any questions that I might answer for the commissioners? Thank you very much.
Fred? I'm sorry. Basically, my understanding is this resolution is to, oh, and I'm sure I'm going to get help from some of these statements I'm going to make, to bring people, we tried to bring people together. It seems like the township and Lorco and the city are not coming together with a resolution. You got something coming up on the 19th. You needed the commissioners' assistance to get a resolution to the issues from the three parties.
I think that question is better asked to Mr. McConnell, who's up next.
Oh, is he up? Oh, there he is. I'm sorry. Yeah, I thought, yeah. Okay, no, that's fine. Okay, thanks, Fred.
Thank you.
Would you rather make a statement first than answer my question, or?
I probably will answer your question during my statement.
Okay.
And you can shut me off at any time. I would beg your indulgence that perhaps I might run over three minutes, but I think it's a counterbalance to numerous people that have addressed the issue in opposition. I want to clarify the fact that what the township and Lorco is requesting of the commissioners here is to endorse the request for the transfer of this particular area out of Oberlin's wastewater-designated-management-agency area into Lorco's area. And that's all that's being asked here. We're not asking for a carte blanche blanket endorsement of what development may or may not take place here. Those issues are yet to be determined. This is one step in a very long process of trying to work towards developing this area. And so, what is asked today is not, it should not be considered an endorsement by the commissioners to anything and everything that may happen in this area. It's just simply to address the issue of the transfer out of Oberlin's planning area into Lorco's planning area.
I'm glad you made that clear, because it made it sound like we were making a decision on the zoning, which we were not.
Well, the media has made it sound that way as well, and that's...
I thought it seemed like this was happening. I didn't...
It wasn't at all.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's all right. I think it's important to recognize the fact that regardless of some of the statements that have been made before, this planning has been going on for a long time, and the township has been trying to work with the city for a long time on these issues. In fact, in the immediate past, it's been nearly three years that we've been in conversation with the city about all of these issues. And even as recently as the last few days, there's been conversation between myself and members of Oberlin City Council, and that's been an ongoing process. But it's been very clear that the city has been very unwilling to reconsider their existing policies, which allow, which do not allow access to their wastewater system without annexation. And as has been stated, annexation can only take place as R1 residential. And the developer has had conversation with the city of Oberlin and their leadership about what might happen if he was to request annexation. And it's been very clear to him that he has to go through the process of requesting annexation. That will only take place as R1 residential. And it's very unlikely, and it was made very clear to him, that it was very unlikely that it would be rezoned as commercial after it was annexed. And his recourse at that point in time is a very difficult process. And I'm sure Mr. Cortez can elaborate on that if you would like to know more. But it's a very, very difficult and unlikely process. If he was to have completed the annexation procedure, went in as R1, and then find out that it's not going to be rezoned to allow him to do any type of commercial development there, then he's made his investment and has no recourse. I want to also mention the fact that commercial development in this area is not just something that has popped up overnight and is a whole new idea. Commercial development in this area is in conformance with the Lorain County Comprehensive Plan, as I'm sure Mr. Twining could address if you chose to ask him. It's in compliance with the Township Land Use Plan, which was recently completed. It's also completely in compliance with the corridor study plan that was jointly commissioned by the township and the city of Oberlin to study this specific area. It was very clear within the results of that plan that commercial development in this area was the most likely use of the area and could be accommodated from a traffic standpoint and every environmental standpoint that needed to be addressed, as long as it was restricted in its total, the total amount of commercial development that takes place here. And along those lines, I want to mention the fact that the township has in place very stringent site-plan review standards that would provide allowance for a very clear buffer and barrier between any development that would take place on this property and the existing Oberlin Reserve development. Now, that doesn't mean that it's going to be as nice as having a soybean field or a corn field right next to your back door. But there are numerous examples around Lorain County and northeast Ohio where big-box development is, in fact, adjacent to residential development. The buffering and the barriers have been put in place that are effective in mitigating this proximity of diversion types of development.
Okay. Can I ask you something? Who's in control of the commercial properties for the buffer zone right now, if they're to develop it?
The developer has an option on the property right now.
I'm saying, do you control that through the townships, through your...
We will control...
As of today, before we make a decision, right now, you control the cosmetics of that property, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and we fully intend to use professional services in evaluating any plans that the developer would bring to the township as to how he would plan to develop this area.
And the buffer zone would be just the 30 feet?
Oh, no. There's a minimum of 100 feet built into our site-plan review standards. And in this particular case, that's only a minimum. That doesn't mean that we can't require more, a wider area. What's been discussed at this point with the developer is a very clear barrier, either an earthen mound or a wall of some sort, but not some concrete noise barrier wall that you would see along freeways on places.
I know. I've been on zoning commission in Amherst, and their definition of a buffer zone is these little pine trees.
No, no, no. That's not even close. We have a minimum of 100-foot buffer area, and within that 100-foot buffer area or more will be more than one type of implementation of an effective landscaping and solid barrier between the two types of development. So, it's not a matter that we haven't put thought into or considered.
Okay. So, right now, the city of Oberlin doesn't control the...
No, but I should mention that we've offered to the city of Oberlin to consider their input in the design of this development, the site-plan review that takes place, the architectural review. We've told them numerous times that we're very willing to have their input on this, but it's been with the understanding that that would come as part of the ability to utilize their wastewater system. And I should mention that we recognize the fact that the most desirable means of handling the wastewater in this development is through the Oberlin wastewater treatment system and have indicated that from the very beginning. However, Oberlin has stuck with their policies that don't allow this developer to have access to that wastewater treatment system under acceptable conditions. And there is an alternative. And the alternative, this irrigated wastewater system that is being proposed and has preliminary approval from EPA, is not some ugly environmental monster. This system, and I know that commissioners are familiar with this type of system, has been used for decades, has been used in conjunction with residential developments. The affluent is off... with residential developments. The affluent is oftentimes used on parks and golf courses and open spaces within the development, so it's not an environmental hazard. And it's still going to be an EPA determination as to what can or cannot be done with this system. Mr. Despirito's request that nobody's seen detailed plans on this, they haven't been required at this point in time. Detailed plans will come forward when this hurdle, among other hurdles, have been passed, and we get to that point. I'd like to essentially indicate that, restate the fact that we've had a long willingness to work cooperatively with the city. We've had a revenue-sharing agreement with the city for 11 years, and that agreement, in fact, indicates that the city will encourage commercial development in this area. I think maybe a question ought to be asked today is if, if all these land use plans and the existing revenue-sharing agreement with the city indicates that commercial development is to be encouraged in this area, five years ago, was it appropriate for the city to okay residential development in what now appears as though it could be the middle of additional commercial? Mr. Norris's contention that commercial development here would thwart additional residential development, I think, is misstated. There is considerable area, both on additional area, both on West Side and the entire East Side route 58, that could be developed residential. And we also know that numerous residential developers have told us that without additional commercial development in the area, additional residential development in the area is very unlikely. They're just not interested unless there's better commercial in the area. The indication that retail saturation exists in the county is accurate. The, this information came to the city through a public hearing, or a public meeting in December is the first I heard it, but they also acknowledged the fact that retail, commercial square footage in southern Lorraine County is not oversaturated. And that's why there is an interest on the part of commercial retail developers to put something in this area. It's not to draw from northern Lorraine County. It's to draw from southern, southwestern, and even southeastern parts of Lorraine County and beyond. The city has indicated their unwillingness to change their policies, and I think that that's what's brought us to this point today. The township has communicated with them numerous times about being willing to consider alternatives and compromises. The city seems to be willing to only pay lip service to the township's planning concerns. They've maintained what I consider to be antiquated policies that they feel give them the ability to confirm their longstanding attitude of trying to dictate planning in the surrounding townships. And I think that when you want to take consideration of the people most affected, most seriously affected by this decision, or any potential development out here, you can't forget the people in the township. We've recognized that farmland retention and open space and residential development are our primary concerns, but in order to do that, we need to subsidize that with income from commercial development. And this is the area in the township that will support commercial development. And we think a township with a strong farmland base and open space development will be an asset to the city as well. So, the people of the township are affected by how this development takes place, not just the people in Oberlin Reserve or the people in downtown Oberlin. And I would strongly ask that the commissioners consider a decision on this resolution today because of the fact that NOACA is considering this issue in the next few weeks, and it's very important for the people that serve on the NOACA board to know how the leadership of Lorraine County views this issue. Thank you very much. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Yeah. My understanding is that the property is already zoned commercial.
Yes.
And I was, was there ever an offer in which that if you could plug into the Oberlin sewer system, that you could have the Oberlin Design Review Committee make sure that was done cosmetically appealing?
We haven't specified who would represent the city in, in design considerations, but we've said repeatedly, both in public meetings and individual conversations, that we would be very willing to allow the city to participate and be a party to the design and the review of anything that happens out there.
Because my understanding that Oberlin and Pittsfield, you guys were the, one of the first people in the state to come up with something that we're doing now today, which is Jeds, correct?
Well, this was a precursor to a Jed. It's a long ways from what is today considered a Jed, but yes, in fact, Oberlin and Pittsfield did put together probably one of the first agreements of that type in the state.
So, you guys have worked together quite a bit. It just seems like you guys are down to, I mean, I look at this as one simple issue, which is, who's going to control the land? And right now, it looks like Pittsfield controls the land and it's zoned commercial, and they just need somewhere to plug in to put sewers in.
Yes, and, but the fact remains that Oberlin is trying to dictate to the township what we can or cannot do.
Right. I mean, that's, I mean, that's kind of where I see it right now, and I guess that's our decision.
Again, we would love to hook into their wastewater system, and the developer is more than willing to pay a surcharge to do that, to help offset any, any consideration for the fact that it's not from annexed area, but it's, the city has been up to this point in time unwilling to consider that option.
We've had several issues like this come before us, and usually we've been pretty good in our public hearing rooms to kind of get people to come together. I'm trying to figure out how to do that. I don't know if you guys say anything, or, and we've, I think we've been successful last 18 months doing that.
I think the bottom line, no matter what the rest of this resolution says, the bottom line is the township trustees are requesting this board to support the township's request to NOACA to redesignate the property to LORCO instead of Oberlin, the planning area.
That's true.
That's the, that's the bottom line. The rest of this resolution here, in my opinion, doesn't really matter.
Well, does it matter? Because I think what happened here was, this is like a, and I've heard it from Elizabeth, it's almost like a, Oberlin felt like they got slapped with this sentence. I think that's about the best way to, when you say, with the sentence where the board does here deem the city to be unwilling or incapable. And, right there, you know?
The, the, that issue stems from the, the regulation that Mr. Osbaugh read to you, because clearly there's some guidelines for the redesignation of the area, and two of those issues that are specific, I believe, at least two of them are, that there's an unwillingness or an inability to service the property.
Does that matter with what the end result's going to be, having that statement out there?
I'm, once again, I, I know what the regulations speak to, and I think that if you're going to support the issue, there has to be some understanding that there's an unwillingness or an inability to go forward with supporting it.
I wouldn't state it that there's an unwillingness. I would just state that they have a resolution on the records that they do not, they, they cannot assist the township with the sewer without an annexation. And, and of course, the property owner has a right to annex or not to annex. That's the, that owner's right, and we're still in the United States of America, and owners do have rights. So, that property owner preferred not to annex. So, the next alternative, in my opinion, that he would have, would be the lagoon system, because he, he cannot get to the sewers, because Oberlin has a resolution that they're not going to allow access to the sewer without an annexation. Property owner doesn't want to annex, so, and the property is located in the township, so it appears to me that the township, you know, has that property right now. The property owner has his rights. So, all, all this board has to be concerned with is the designation to LORCO for the planning area.
I agree. I think the statement that if the commissioners would support the, the request for the transfer, by that action alone, you would have made a statement that NOACA would be able to interpret as saying that you've studied all of the, the conditions that exist in this particular issue, and based on the request of the township and LORCO, you support that request. You wouldn't have to make a value judgment as to necessarily why you're, why you would endorse this resolution. So, I think you're, you're right, Commissioner Vasquez.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a few remarks?
Uh huh.
Just for the edification of the public who may not be aware of this, on May 15th, there was a meeting held at the Agricultural Center, which was attended by representatives of NOACA, the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, LORCO, Pittsfield Township, Lorraine County Engineers Office, our administrative staff, and the city of Oberlin, and the developer was in attendance at that meeting. Subsequent to the meeting, John Beaker, who is the Environmental Planning Director for NOACA, sent out a synopsis of the meeting entitled "Proposed Modification to the Oberlin City Planning Facility Area," and he mentions that the NOACA Water Quality Committee will meet on Wednesday, June 19th, to consider the request from LORCO for a modification to the Oberlin Facility Planning Area. The city of Oberlin is requested to address in writing by June 13th whether any of the conditions contained in NOACA's Clean Water 2000 Policy Plan 46A hold. The Ohio EPA is requested to address in writing by June 13th whether the sewer-ing plan proposed by LORCO protects the environment and is technically achievable. LORCO is requested to address in writing by June 13th whether the conditions listed in the policy for to seep be are satisfied. Materials received in writing by June 13th will be included in the agenda of the NOACA Water Quality Committee meeting. The committee will provide the parties an opportunity to address the issues concerning the proposed FPA modification prior to making a recommendation to the NOACA board. It's just a little background, because I heard several people say today that they thought the process a little unusual. This is the first time, I believe, this board has addressed this issue. As was mentioned by a couple of individuals, the NOACA's Clean Water 2000 Plan Policy was in fact initiated in 2000, and there were several negotiations that went on prior to the county accepting the issue. So, that's just for information's sake for those of you who are here. Okay, all this information is going to be compiled by June 13th, and the Water Quality Committee is meeting on June the 19th, correct?
Yes.
So, what kind of timeframe do we have here? That's, I think, what we have to figure out for us to make a decision. It's not very much of a...
If you don't mind, one of the reasons that it would be important to act, makes hell the cameraman mad if you don't come up there.
One of the reasons it would be important to act today is so that we could have this resolution to distribute in the packet. We need to have this information to NOACA by June 13th, which is your meeting date next week, and if we have this material to them ahead of that, then it will be available to all of the committee members when the packet is distributed. So, that, that would be the importance of the timing.
Thank you.
Anybody else in favor of this resolution can speak? Anyone else like to speak in favor of this resolution? I think Bob would like to make a statement. Bob?
I, I think I'm like Elizabeth. I'm on both sides of the fence. I've been there. The words that were just used, more of an unwillingness than an ability, resonates soundly right through my entire body. I, too, felt that very way when my land was unsalable due to somebody else not wanting, I providing a free garden space play area for people who are trespassing on my property. This, according to Supreme Court, is a taking. Seems to me if they want to prevent this, they should unite together, buy the property at the same price, and the problem's over.
Thanks, Bob. I do think that, but life isn't that easy, Bob. Thank you, Rob.
Yes, I'd just like to take a quick moment to make a few clarifications. Something I would like to say is I do agree with what you're saying, regarding the fact that it is, that it's a fact, however.